All right, should we go ahead and get ready and get started? Welcome to you all to the Tuesday, February 19th, 2019 meeting of the Falls Church City Council. We are delighted you all are here with us this evening. I'm sorry to inform you guys at this point, but as a precautionary matter, we're going to cancel tonight's meeting because of the snow tomorrow, so not yet. Councilmember Z is absent again. As you may know, his mother died last week, and so he's still dealing with family matters, so we wish him the best. Mr. Shields, do you want to go ahead and kick things off with the second quarter financial report?
So I'll turn it straight over to Ms. Baba, and we did have a presentation of this with Budget and Finance on Friday, but Ms. Baba, take it away.
Good evening, Mayor Charter, and members of the council. The second quarter results for the current fiscal year, fiscal year 19, for the first six months. We are following the budgeted pattern. Overall, the revenues are 1.2% over the budget, and following this trend, we project to end the year close to the projections. I will go over a few highlight categories and just bring to your attention certain specific revenue categories. The real estate tax receipts, as you will see, are on track, and net of tax abatements and tax relief, we are expected to end the year at budget. We are seeing a 4.3% year-over-year increase, and that, of course, includes the real estate tax increase, plus the assessment increase, and also any other increases that we have seen so far. So it's headed in the right direction. Personal property tax, so as we had seen in the first quarter, this one, these are approximately 150,000 below projections at this point, which is roughly 3.6% lower than the last year's performance for the second quarter. As noted earlier, the assessed value of vehicles increased by 1%, and we added 90 cars, although which has been offset by the decrease in assessed valuation of business personal property with depreciations exceeding new business investments. So this is one category we need to be mindful of as we go into the next year's budget. Projections, development, fiscal year 2020. Sales tax and meals tax both have performed well so far for the first six months and are 9% higher than budget target for both of those. Sales tax is almost 11% over the last year's second quarter performance, and meals tax is roughly 8% over the last year's performance. And since both these are five, for sales tax, we have four months of data, and for meals tax, we have five months of data, so when we bring you the March, the next year's budget, proposed budget for the city manager's budget in March, we'll have at least a couple more months of data, and we'll have some more numbers, and our projections will be a little bit more aligned. On the business professional B poll, this is one category, although similar to the sales and meals, it is still not picking up as much. We're seeing some positiveness in the retail side, however, there are contracts, there are professional services, and B poll, the business professional occupational license category, we need to realize roughly 7% growth this year to meet our budget, which is an ambitious target. And I'd also like to note that the three-year average so far, including the last year's actual and two years prior to that, is 3.3%, and a five-year average so far is 4%. So this is another category. We continue to monitor. The deadline for payment on business license is March 1st, so we will hope to have a little bit more realistic projections when we come to you in March. Other taxes are roughly 4.6% below budget, and this is resulting from communication taxes down overall, and water and sewer taxes also seeing a little decline, and cigarette taxes are also down in comparison to the projections. So this is another one of those categories that we continue to monitor. Licenses and permits is roughly 70,000 over projections at this time for the first six months, and which is roughly 10% over budget and 45% compared to last year, and I'd like to point out, this is primarily because of the initial payment that we received on the Founder's Row project so far. We have other permit fees that are expected during the remaining six months, and we will have better projections for the next year, given the large projects that are in the pipeline when we do the next year's budget. And also like to point out the investment revenues. The city's investments have earned better earnings so far in these returns, and this is one of the categories that brings the revenues collected so far, major portion of the 1.2% over budget. And on the last page, you see the revenue breakdown by department, and, sorry, expenditure breakdown by department, and it shows overall underspending for the second quarter, and mostly because of contracts and professional services that are cyclical in nature, and also for specific services that renew at certain times of the year, so that may not have been realized so far. At this point, we do not project any department to spend beyond their budgeted appropriations. However, we do come to council with an amendment in May, and any adjustments that need to be made come to you at that time. So so far, and then, of course, the next, the second six months, January through June, also includes the weather, you know, activities related expenditures that are taking on more, so this is only till December 31st. And with that, finally, I want to say, as I've said before, that we continue to monitor our revenues and these results, and also the results for January and February performance will factor into our projections that we bring to you as part of the proposed budget on March 11th. With that, I conclude my report and open to any questions you may have.
All right, thank you so much, Vice Mayor Connolly. Did you have a question? You look like you were getting ready for one.
Thanks.
Sorry, you got your chance on Friday. No, just kidding.
That's a fair point. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Baba.
Just kidding.
I actually was going to toss this one to Mr. Lichtenhouse, but one of the things we talked about Friday was the increase in meals tax and sales tax, right? And the Chamber of Commerce in the city had a Live Local FC campaign in November, and I'm just wondering if those numbers are fully reflected in this increase? I think you said the sales tax was just the first four months of the year.
Yeah, we get the sales tax from the state, so that's, we only have received four months of data.
So that doesn't even reflect any Live Local in the sales tax?
It doesn't reflect November and December.
But the meals tax does.
Meals tax has November in it, has five months.
Okay. So we can reasonably say that Live Local, it's during Live Local month in Falls Church. The meals tax increased by 8% over the previous year.
In your professional opinion, would you say most of this is attributed to the Live Local campaign?
And specifically, Mr. Lichtenhouse.
In your profession.
I feel like I'm on prosecution to prosecute you.
No further questions, Your Honor. All right, who else has got a question? Ms. Hardy?
So I had a similar question, but slightly broader, still focusing on the good news about meals and property taxes. So not only are we higher than budget for FY19, but I noticed that we are 8 and 11% higher than FY18, so it's good news, year-over-year growth. Do we have a sense of how many new retail businesses and restaurants we've had compared to last year? So can we contribute that? Is it the pie getting bigger, or is it the, I guess, tax generated per business is also getting bigger?
Yeah, that's a good question, and I'll probably need to refer back with the Commissioner of Revenue and get you that information.
I think it would be really interesting, especially since we're seeing this as kind of a trend, and I think this council in particular is really focused on adding those retail businesses and restaurants, knowing that it's good for the city in terms of having more choices, but also really good for revenues, clearly.
Right.
I think it'd be good to answer that perpetual community question we have, which is, gosh, we're adding so much competition here, what does that do for all the existing businesses? I think we generally think that the rising tide lifts all boats, but I think it'd be good to have the data that backs up to it, too. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Duncan?
When we say that we're following certain revenue categories, is there anything we can do other than follow? I mean, there's, anything we can do to generate, you know, more B poll revenue? I mean, are we making an effort to make sure we've done all the collections that we should?
Yes, that's true. I've actually worked last year with the revenue, with the commissioner, as well as this year, and they're aggressively following the delinquencies, the collections, and making sure that we collect as much as possible.
Capturing any new cars that have moved in and so forth.
Yeah, they're pretty up to date on the DMV records, but they're also using the EDL to make sure they're after.
All of Dan C.'s cars? Make sure.
Right. Well, you know, I mean, the staff at City Hall has, of course, got chaos of a working environment, and that's going to be more challenging in the next month, so we appreciate all efforts to cope with just the normal hassles of moving on top of trying to generate more revenue out of some of these categories that we're following. We appreciate that.
All right, Mr. Lichtenhouse.
Real quick, not to put you on the spot for Live Local anymore, so I'll let that go, but yeah, we're proud of that. I just want to say that, you know, I think this is a reflection of a lot of the policies and at least the practices, both in spirit and fundamentally on an operational level, that the city and council and others have, I think, really worked hard over the last year, keeping a check on expenses and doing things that we can to grow the overall fiscal pie for the city. So I think that this is very encouraging, especially going into maybe the latter stages of a pretty hot economic cycle, so I'm very pleased to see that, you know, some of the things that we've done have generated some additional revenue, and also that the city and everyone across the board has really taken heart to fact that, you know, we've got to, we've got to tighten the belt, so to speak. So this is, this is very encouraging, both on the revenue and the expense side, so thank you, guys.
All right, any other questions or comments? Thank you very much for your fine work. We look forward to seeing you back soon.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to the next item, the purchase of the Fellowes' property. Mr. Shields or Ms. McCroskey?
Good evening, council. You have before you, and there's a revised report that was at your places tonight and has been posted, it just had some typographical corrections, but what we'll be asking for next week is for you to authorize the city manager to execute the settlement agreement, which is for the purchase price of $4,671,110, which is what we had agreed to at a prior meeting. And in addition to that provision, it just has a few other minor things and things which will confirm that the condemnation action was proper, such as the purpose, et cetera, as agreed to in that document. The document also provides that the trust will pay the taxes on the property, or if they do not, the taxes penalty and interest will be deducted from the amount, the price amount, which is what I expect is going to happen, because to date, there has not been a payment of those back taxes. The process for this, just briefly, will be that we'll enter into the settlement agreement, and then a, an order will be provided to the Circuit Court with the settlement agreement, and when the Circuit Court enters that order, it goes to the land records, and that is what gets recorded. It's an order that transfers the title to the city. And then when that is recorded, we will make the payment to the trust. So that's just a brief summary, but we've been through this a number of times. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
All right, just as a matter of clarification, this is, though, although it was initiated as a condemnation of voluntary settlement that the seller of the property has agreed to.
Yes, the parties have negotiated and agreed to this settlement price, and this is a settlement of the litigation and a voluntary sale.
Okay, great. Other questions, comments? Mr. Duncan?
Just in keeping with the theme of actions that are consistent with council policies and work, this property has been on the city's open space acquisition plan for 14 years now, 14 years. So I'd say it's, you know, a result of long consideration and much discussion and input from, you know, some of the neighbors and so forth, so that's a good thing, I think. We don't do anything in a big hurry here in Falls Church, so 14 years is a reasonable amount of time to consider something like this. The second thing is, you know, we need to have a moment of celebration whenever the balloon actually drops on this, but pretty soon, people will start asking Rec. Parks Committee Chief among them, where's the money to maintain this or do whatever we're going to do with it? So that would be the next step to make sure we have a plan for its interim use or interim, you know, I guess some level of improvement has to be done right off the bat, because the old house has to come down. The third thing was just a number of questions. So line 43 in the staff report, the number is 4667?
You, that's, you have the old staff report?
Oh, oh.
That's a typographical error, so if you find one, it's probably, it's a stapled version, it's probably right there in the middle under your pen.
I marked up the one we got.
So the number is four?
So we got the, yeah, it's, not 467110.
No, not, it's 4671110.
Okay, so the settlement agreement in the original staff, in the original packet was correct.
Right.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
That's all I had.
Other comments, questions? I think this is exciting, you know, we're adding to the amount of open space in the city, they're not making any more land, and two acres for a small place like Falls Church, I think, is, is quite a contribution and acquisition, so I think this is a good day for Falls Church. Ms. Hardy?
So on Mr. Duncan's point about kind of next steps for the house and the property and sidewalks, should we just schedule time on the work, I guess, upcoming work session to talk about it, so we can?
We'll have some discussion on it with budget. We'll do some immediate things to just secure the property with an existing budget in the current fiscal year, but the, you know, the bigger discussion is the CIP discussion.
And Carol, I think there's another typo in the title of the, even the revised version. It still says 466, there's an extra 6, I think.
You're correct.
All right, I want to thank also the city attorney, and I know she's worked extensively on this transaction, so her hat's off to you as well. Any other comment, or should we move on to the next item? All right, let's keep on rolling. Mr. Shields?
So this is the staff presentation and council discussion on the special exception entitlement for the West Falls Church Economic Development Project. And what we'd like to do, just by kind of order, first is to have a staff report on some of, and we'll just go through some of the highlights, and then we'll have the development team go through their application, and they'll have graphics and a presentation for that. And so we'll turn it over to Ms. Aubrey first.
Good evening, council. So the staff report that you have, it includes a background section, which I think we're all familiar with, a lot of the history of the site, about it being brought into the city, and then the referendum through the new high school, all the land use changes that we did over the last year, and then concluding with the recent RFP process and the interim agreement. So currently, we have received a application for the special exception entitlement, and we have done, staff has done a very preliminary review of this. As part of the interim agreement, they provided a draft application package, which staff took about 10 days to review and got them back some preliminary comments, which they addressed and revised and submitted as part of the February 4th application deadline. And then, so we have, it is currently out for Development Review Committee staff, and those comments are due back next week, and so we have done a preliminary planning staff review. So I'm going to kind of go through the application a little bit in terms of the special exception entitlement major elements. And the first one is density. They are proposing approximately 1.4 million square feet, and that is, majority of that would occur in Phase 1. In terms of density, that is in line with the 1.2 to 1.5 million square feet that was requested in the comp plan amendment, or the comp plan goals for the site, and then also that comes out to about a 3.7 FAR, which is within the 2 to 4 FAR goal that we had. The uses is a mixed-use development composed of office, hotel, senior housing, condos, apartments, retail, and the civic and entertainment use, including a large open space. In terms of height, they do vary over the site, with the tallest heights at the intersection of Haycock and State Road 7, and they decrease towards the school, with the exception of an 11-story senior housing building in Block C adjacent to the proposed parking garage. In terms of parking, they are, they will be requesting a reduction in the required parking ratios from the zoning ordinance, and those ratios would be binding element in the SCE, and then exact parking numbers and TDM measures, and shared parking analysis would be part of the special exception site plan process. Terms of schedule, actually, let me step back. We have included a table on page 4 that compares the SCE application with the interim agreement in terms of the material terms related to uses and square footages. They are in line with the SCE, between the SCE and the interim agreement. We will request and have requested that they break out in the SCE the civic square footage from the retail square footage to ensure compliance with the interim agreement, and the same with the multifamily. We would like to see that broken out, differentiated between condos and multifamily, or rental apartments. Some additional items that we have identified preliminarily is, in regards to height en masseing, the hotel height adjacent to the school plaza has changed a little bit from the RFDP, kind of the initial elevations that we saw. It is showing about six stories along the entire elevation along the school plaza, whereas originally it had been stepped down to about, or the hotel had kind of truncated, and then there was the three-story civic space. We would like to see, moving forward, an alternate plan related to the senior housing and office locations that are adjacent to the above-ground parking garage. If they are wishing to perhaps flip those two uses, we would like to see what that would look like. And then placemaking and amenity plan, we just want to get more clarity on what all elements are they planning to include in that, so we can get a better idea what we need to see up front in this stage. The phasing plan and programming, program summary sheet I had talked about, that's breaking out some of the civic and the residential square footage. And then the phasing plan, they have one included, but we would like to see some timing related to that, when the construction would actually happen for each phase. In terms of process, it's on schedule to come back before you next Monday for a first hearing, and then referral out to the boards and commissions. That's anticipated to happen within the first two weeks of March. We are grouping the boards and commissions, and so we'll have five to six meetings where we'll combine groups with similar likes and get, we've asked for ideas of what their kind of may, top three areas might be that they want to discuss, and the developer plans to kind of cater their presentations towards that, so that we can have a focused and beneficial meetings on those. And then the boards and commissions would use the rest of March to meet again if they need to as a group and formulate any comments they have, and those would be due back to us the first week in April. And the Planning Commission is scheduled to make a recommendation to council on April 1st, and then April and May would be used to, for the developer to take the comments they've received from not just boards and commissions, but also from staff, and do any revisions necessary, and come back before council for some work sessions and final action in April and May. And then, as far as fiscal, that, that's included, and those are similar, those haven't changed since what we saw of the interim agreement. Phase 1 is estimated at 4.7 million to 4.8 million. So I think I am done. If there's any questions for me right now, I can take them, or I'll turn it over to the developer for presentation.
Any questions for staff? Yes, Vice Mayor Connolly?
Will it be going out to all the boards and commissions or a select group?
It'll be our usual select group, so the AAB, tree commission, environmental sustainability, housing, HSEC, catch, wreck and parks.
So that sounds like everybody. Is there anybody who's not going to get it?
Well, we also have a towing board, but on our board.
Okay.
We usually don't refer these things out, so yes, our usual.
Okay, so the usual group of, and the Chamber of Commerce and VEPIS and the school board, will the school board review it as part of that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. On the staff report, on like line 422, page 11 of 13, we have all the whereas's. I'm wondering if we want to add a whereas in there that says, whereas Falls Church has determined that the boundary adjustment agreement, all the terms of the boundary adjustment agreement have been met?
You're referring to the 70-30 split and?
Yes. As I read through that, I thought that it should, we should say that in there. Yes, no?
It might be for adoption down the road. At this point, there hasn't been a determination about the subdivision, so I don't know if it's, but we, you won't be adopting this tonight, you'll just be considering it, and then it goes out to boards and commissions. So maybe in the end, before this comes back, when the subdivision will have been done, we could do that.
Okay, thank you. And then this, the developers are going to talk about, right? So I'll ask this question, though. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Snyder?
Thanks a lot, Mr. Mayor. So let me put on the table a few issues, which, if at all possible, I'd like to see resolved between now and when this, assuming that we take action and move it forward on Monday before it comes back to us. The first is the enforcement mechanisms. That is, if we're assuming a certain amount of retail or commercial or a certain type of residential, what are the enforcement mechanisms? That is, what has to be done before certificate of occupancy is issued? So I'm interested, really, in how we assure from our perspective that we get what we think we're getting. The second point I want to make is really a series of questions about page 7, where on lines 241 through 258, we're sort of laying out a summary of the project. So my question is, we talk about a one-story grocery store, and yet we've got a grocery store right across the street in the Giant, and we've built several on the other part of the city, so I'm going to have a lot of questions about how doable that is, even though it may be preferable. The next thing is more a question. We talk about ground floor and kiosk retail. What do we mean by kiosk retail? And does that suggest those little window things that we have along Maple with the Lincoln Project that have never really been filled, except in one case? So I guess I'm really going to be interested in a very detailed retail plan with binding agreements that do more than have little cut-up spaces. That is, it will add the kinds of retail that we don't already have in the city, and there are quite a number of examples of that. So I'll be interested in that. And then, there seems to be an overlapping of numbers. We talk about 136,730 square feet of ground floor and kiosk retail, and then it's an asterisk, excludes, includes grocery and civic GSF, and yet we have one-story grocery store, so I'm confused. Are these additive or are they subtractive? What do those numbers really mean? The next question, I think, which is a lot of citizens are going to have, is Phase 2. What is it? When does it occur? What if it doesn't occur? Because it's not a guaranteed thing, we know that, and we know there are contractual provisions relating to it. The next issue I have is that, and this was what occurred to me when I saw a multi-patient EMS call in the city about a week ago, where I believe all the units were Fairfax County units. My question to the city is, are we to the point where we need a new fire station? Are we to the point where we need a new public safety element to this development, considering the size of it, the height of it, considering the overall growth in population, considering the location of other public safety facilities, both police and fire in the region, and our usage of mutual aid agreements as opposed to providing the services ourselves? And then the civic area, I have some questions about what that really means and under those circumstances. Finally, I note that the road up through the center has been called, I think, a Champs Élysées or something like that, and the last time I was on the Champs Élysées, it was walled on both sides. And the last time I was on the Champs Élysées, it was walled on both sides with high-end retail that produced a lot of tax revenue for the city of Paris. So my question is, are we, can we enjoy a similar environment there in terms of tax generation? So those are some questions that I want to put on the table formally for further discussion later on, and I'm sure there'll be more. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. I'm going to try to pull out my questions for staff versus the developers. So Ms. Aubrey, I appreciated the chart that was comparing the differences between IA and what was submitted in SE. Did we do a comparison with what was submitted with the RFDP, which I know was probably at a higher level, but were there any commitments kind of made when we chose this developer in the RFDP stage?
I think I have looked at that, but I can't recall.
Just curious whether there are any large departures because that's probably what we were anchored on and?
Yeah, I don't recall any large departures.
Yeah. When, when we were looking at the amendment to the IA, we were comparing proposal to the initial IA and then to the amendment. And the proposal and the initial IA were very much in sync with each other.
Okay. Good. I think that's important because that's, I think, what we largely all studied before we chose the developer. So my next question was around parking. So we're, I'm sure we'll get into parking ratios and all that. But when I talked to the planning director last week, he mentioned that there was going to be a study done on kind of post-development, kind of actual parking usage. And all the mixed-use developments that we've done, be able to assess, well, how is parking actually used? Are ratios the correct ones? Do we have any of those results so that we can gauge whether this parking reduction request is reasonable or, you know, based on actual, I guess, data that we have in the city? And if not, when do we expect that data to be available?
I know we've done some for the hotels in the area, in the city. I think we've done them also for some of the mixed-use developments. I'm not sure if we were doing any more on that recently for the mixed use. I'll have to double check. But yeah, we definitely use that.
That would be what I guess I'd request before we kind of say, hey, these, you know, reductions make sense is let's actually figure out how parking is used today or not used today. Let's not overbuild if we see that we've actually overbuilt in some of the buildings already. Next question, streetscape. I know there's a bunch of streetscape cross-sections in the SCE. Does everything in there proposed meet our new standards? And if not, where are the departures?
There's not really enough details right now to confirm. I know some of the, they are showing individual tree pits. So I think our focus would be on, for the commercial, our commercial standards for streetscapes would be focused on those routing Haycock and Seven. The interior kind of public are going to be private streets. So I think we would allow more flexibility on that. And then our standards do allow for some flexibility and I think that would really come into play along Route Seven, just the nature of it. And then I know they're proposing having that also be kind of a, for bike use and a lot of walking also. So I think there's.
So while the interior streets are kind of met, are private, I guess, the idea of kind of the commercial streetscape standards is to promote kind of friendliness for pedestrians and, you know, kind of a lively and vibrant kind of retail environment, which I know exactly what they're trying to go for as well. So I just want to make sure that we're leaving enough clear sidewalk as well as outdoor dining space, especially if those two are in play. So we don't end up having really crowded streets. Ultimately, I think we have the same goal, which is we want people using the streets. We want people dining on the streets. We want them to be very active. So even if technically they're interior private streets, to the extent they can aspire to achieving some of those same standards we have on our large commercial streets, I think that's a good goal to have. I think the rest are for the developers. Actually, so I had similar question with Mr. Snyder. So more of a question for the city attorney to think when we get to CA. For heights, the min-max kind of commitments in terms of square footage, locations and uses, I guess, how is the legal language going to be developed so that, are these going to be commitments that they're locked into? Or do we have to think about enforcement mechanisms such that if they aren't, if they're broken, that there's some way to kind of enforce via the CA?
Well, some, for instance, heights, that will be, there will be more, I think, detailed approval at the time of SCE approval. But we will also be looking to create enforcement mechanisms in the comprehensive agreement that would back up also sort of the zoning requirements that will apply as part of the SCE. And then also, I mean, down the road, when site, special exception site plans are approved, they will be more detailed.
So what might be helpful, given that this is just a new process for us, is be able to outline, here's what can change between SCE and SESP, you know? And then here's what cannot change.
Right.
Some sort of like chart that delineates the two. It could be, you know, hey, the heights are this range, they have to be within this range and that can't change. But, you know, this can vary between these two, especially it could be like a two-year period.
Right.
That might be helpful just to help educate us with this new process too.
Right. And that'll probably be useful for everybody to consider as they go through this. We can work on that.
Cool. Thank you. That's it for now.
All right. Yeah, for some reason, these dollar store glasses just fell apart. I'll be using a monocle the rest of the evening. Is you a question, Mr. Duncan?
I have a couple of questions, but I think maybe I'll wait to hear from the developer to make sure that, you know, I'm not unnecessarily making you repeat yourself, so.
All right. Well, let's hear from Murphy and Sean. Welcome. Thank you. We're looking forward to hearing what you have to say.
Yeah, sure. Good evening. Evan is taking a week off, so I know that you're used to seeing Evan up here. He's with his family in Utah. He's coming back tomorrow. But appreciate the opportunity to come before you go through the SCE application that's been submitted. I'm going to let Murphy do most of the talking since this is, a lot of Tori Gallus' hard work in here as far as the plan, but can certainly answer any questions on technical aspects, on parking, phasing, the planning or the rationale behind some of the retail and other questions that you may have. So.
All right.
Let Murphy go ahead.
Thank you.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Murphy Antoine, an architect and planner with Tori Gallus and Partners. And we thought it might be useful to give a brief overview of what I'll call the kind of graphics package of the plan in the SCE submission. Again, to re-familiarize everyone with the content and the thought and then, then open that up to questions. So if we could look at that. And I'm just going to sort of ask for next slides on this. So this is the SCE component application that went in on February 4th, which you see as, as inserts into, into your package. If we go to the next page, we have worked fairly closely with city manager Shields and staff to, to go through that if we could go to the next. Okay. And to look very clearly at the SCE checklist and requirements because as, as it was mentioned by council, this is a relatively new process. So we wanted to make sure that we were covering everything, getting off on the right foot. And so you're just looking at a table of contents, but it is actually organized to, to try to correlate to where items are covered to make that as clear as possible for discussion and where things, where you can find things that address those pieces of the, of the application. If we get to the next piece, just to, again, reorient people to the, to the site at Route Seven in Haycock, we're talking about an organization of four blocks, mixed-use blocks between residential office, we'll get into the uses, but distinct blocks with a Commons Drive down the middle. The, the kind of overall planning goals that we've been discussing from the very beginning are connections to the school site, the new high school site, the middle school site, but also connections, I'll call it page north-south to the Virginia Tech site and beyond that to Womata and the West Falls Church metro. So making this what is really an edge to the city right now as something of its own center, but also something clearly more connected to its adjacencies and the larger city to the east. And we'll go into, if we go to the next one, we'll talk about some, some details of that. This is a little bit of the phasing. So the red box that you see in the upper right is phase two. Everything else is phase one. So we've also talked several times about gaining a critical mass in phase one and doing enough there to really make an impact. And I think that that illustrates it. This also illustrates the importance of some of the connections particularly to the, the high school site in that we're working on that street connection and the red box that you see on the left and coordinating very closely with that development and design team. And then also the, the drop-off as the middle street, again, running page east-west connects into the, the sort of receiving end and discharge end of the, the school sites. We go to the next slide, we start to see some of the mix of uses. So following up on Aubrey's characterization, the, the uses and the densities of pieces. So this is a ground floor plan. All of the red is retail. So you see a high concentration of retail along the north-south Commons Drive. So to the earlier question about the liveliness of that retail and where that retail is concentrated and what kind of revenues that can generate and activity that can generate for the city, you see that, that concentration in red along the Commons. You also see the larger, I'll call it an orange footprint of the, the grocer, which is about a 43,000 square foot grocer with, with frontage on Route Seven, with a face on Route Seven and really anchoring that spot. And then the yellow is residential, the blue is office, the lighter, I'll call it salmon, depending on what, what eyes are seeing, as the senior and the purple as the office. So we see less of the yellow here. We see less of the salmon here. We see less of the purple here, but that's because this is the ground floor plan and those are really the entrances and lobbies to those residential, senior residential and hotel uses. You also see the, the shared parking garage in between the school and, and the Commons that is, call it about a 760-car garage that, that is shared between school use and, and use on the development site. When we go upstairs on the next slide, you'll see those uses, again, the same color coding, but yellow as residential. So you'll see the residential multifamily block above the grocer in Block A in the lower right. You'll see the, the residential three buildings in Block D just above that going towards the Virginia Tech site. The two blue office buildings in, in Block B and Block D. And again, the senior component, the hotel component and the civic component, which there was some discussion earlier about how that's counted in the retail. Again, this is the music venue that has been proposed as both a civic use, but also a leased use as part of that retail component. And the, the kiosks, which we, you'll see pictures a little bit later and have seen them in the renderings, but these are seen as, as more permanent structures. Think of them as, as places to get ice cream, places to get coffee, but activating as permanent structures in, in the middle of the Commons. We'll go to the, the next slide. You can see some of this development program, which we're trying to illustrate and document and give you tabulations for a very specifically illustrated program, which you'll see in these charts, but also minimums and maximums. And this, I think, will be part of the, the SCE discussion on, on where the sensitivity points of those are. So I think this might be better to talk about in, in the detailed questions, but I know that there are, there will be questions about the residential counts. So I'll tell you that this illustrates 969 residential units and the range proposed is between 715 and 1180. And those are clearly capped in the tabulations and will be clearly capped in the SCE discussions and approvals with lesser caps or actually no proposed caps on things like office and, and retail. If we go to the next slide, you can start to see that in a little bit more three-dimensional form. And this is maybe hovering above the, the ball fields at the school, looking through the Commons towards Route Seven. You see the, again, the same color coding of yellow residential, blue office, purple hotel, red retail that really dominates the base. And then the senior component in the salmon. And you'll get a, you also get a sense for the scale of that shared garage there in the, in the foreground and some of the connections even in Street A and to School Plaza and to the school. And then if we go to the next illustration, this is another aerial axonometric, looking from the opposite corner with, with the same sort of distribution. But you can also see, I think, in this one pretty clearly, the edges formed at the Commons and the mix of uses that is very intentionally distributed along the Commons to activate it at, you know, of all hours of an 18-hour day and, and with, with many different uses. In the next period, you'll see, again, this is back to the point of the illustrated versus minimums and maximums. So the ghosted-in boxes, I will say, are the maximum heights that were allowed in the B2 zoning, the change to the B2 zoning. And the, the darker colors are illustrating that proposed. What we are really talking about is stepping down from the B2 allowed densities towards the school. So you'll see the blocks broken down into, to, to different sub-blocks, B1, B2, B3. And C is the hotel and civic function block that is proposed and would be discussed as a binding element as a lower, lower height piece than, than the other volumes. We go to the next slide. There has been a lot of discussion with the, the school board and representatives in particular about those heights and that mass and what kind of shadows they might cast. So this is a study of, a solar study of shadows at summer in kind of the shoulder seasons at the equinoxes and in the winter in the three columns across morning, noon, mid-afternoon. And you can see the, the distributions of those, those shadows. So it really is in the morning of the middle of winter, when the sun's in its lowest point, that there is any impact across the plazas to, to the school. And even that, I'd say is relatively minimal.
Just a quick, do these shadows reflect what height of the buildings?
Excuse me?
What height of the buildings?
This reflects the, the proposed heights, so that the heights that you saw in the solid color in those axon metrics. Okay. Not the full zoning build-out.
I want to add to that because I've got some language in here that you guys have reserved the right to change some of the heights or some of the massing in terms of the allowed densities or what's been approved? Is that right?
Not above the densities, but in order to achieve the higher ends of those ranges, we are proposing places where that could flex up to the B2 allowed zone.
Sure. So because a number of us here were involved in the design and the selection of that school and there was a lot of talk about daylighting of the classrooms. So what I want to be very careful of, especially in the winter solstice, I'm not necessarily concerned about summer because you're not going to have kids there, but if some of that height changes in some of those corners, are we losing some of the daylighting in the schools if you guys decide to take advantage of, if you, if you guys decide to take advantage of some of the higher, some of the higher densities or some, some higher height on, on that corner over there?
I think that that would be part of the SCE discussion, but if we flip that one slide, that, that C block, that hotel block, and if you can see it in the chart tabulation is where we would propose or work out a binding element, that that would be a place that's
But that, but that hotel could go up to 200,000 square feet, which is not what, right? Which would go higher than the solid block that you have now, correct?
I think the likely hotel that we're looking at is probably in the 80 to 100.
Okay.
Go to the full 160.
Okay.
I mean, I think we can bracket it. It's a little alarming when you look at it's ever going to look like that.
I'm not sure what operators you guys have selected, but yeah, the point is on that, on that particular corner, because a lot of time and consideration was taken into the daylighting and the amount of glass and the positioning of the building in terms of how it daylights the classrooms. And I want to make sure if something does change, where you do find an operator or there is the opportunity to build higher than, you know, the 100,000-plus, that, that we're not, we're not cannibalizing all the work that was put into the design of that high school if it decides to go up. Other places I'm not as concerned about, but that particular corner, which could potentially overshadow that portion of the high school, I think is incredibly important for us to make sure that, that we don't ruin all the hard work that was put into figuring out the position of, of that, of that school.
Understood. And I think one other sort of release valve on that block is the civic you'll see is right over.
Right.
Top of it right now. I mean, if we did end up with more program on the, yeah, the hotel. I mean, if we did end up with more program on the, yeah, the hotel around, so it was a C shape rather than just...
Okay. That's fine.
So there's ways we can...
Yep, I got it. Yeah, just keep in mind that if that height does change and that shadow study pushes that over further to where it is now, especially around December, that's going to be, that's going to be a hard stop for a lot of folks that have been involved in the design of that high school.
The other thing I would add to Sean's description as another release valve, I like that description, is the, if the block itself would likely change as program on a block gets, has a need maybe to grow, it's not just in height, but that block could grow to the right if the Commons pushed 20 feet, and that's been part of what we've been looking at moving the roads, making blocks a little bit bigger to accommodate grocer needs or accommodate other things. There would be planned manipulations in the boundary to accommodate...
Okay. All right.
Vice Mayor Conley, then Ms. Art.
I just want to follow on to the shadow question, which is, the school that actually is in the shadow for the winter solstice picture is the middle school. That's got a lot of shadow there. What's causing that shadow? Is it the garage or is it the office and up there next to it?
It's everything.
It's everything.
December 21st at 9:00 a.m., everything is in shadow.
Well, yeah.
It's not a flattering solar study. I think the garage at that point is probably casting a shadow directly onto the middle school, office behind the shared. I think that's just the nature. I think the four or five-story garage is actually the thing that would be cast.
Dark shadow, okay.
Even without the office built in there. Around noon, I think it's pulled back, so it's in the street at that...
Right. All right. I just want to make sure that as we're talking about this, we're keeping the middle school in mind as well, because it's there and it's not going to move at all.
Ms. Art?
No, definitely.
All right. Well, keep on rolling, then.
We'll keep going. This is a chart that describes the parking, which again, might be more useful to talk about in more detailed parts of the questions. And it is tabulated on a per-use basis and ratios, so that's where the numbers are coming from. And this also describes the loading and the access to those different garages and where those happen. We've talked specifically about the shared garage towards the school. There are other underground structured parking garages in Block D, both as part of Phase 1 and part of Phase 2, and then a significant buried structured garage underneath the grocer's block and an above-grade wrapped garage for the residential in that block as well. We go to the next...
Can I ask a question here since we're...
Sure.
Oh, I was going to ask, what's the total number of street spaces you have versus garage spaces?
The number of street spaces is probably, I'm going to look to my colleague here, but I think it's in the 40 to 50 range or so out of the couple thousand total parking spaces. So we have illustrated in this diagram, if you can see the yellow and red hatch for the on-street parking, and it's what in the retail world might be called teaser parking, but it also contributes to the streetscapes that we'll see in the next sections as buffers to pedestrians. It does not supply a huge volume of parking, again, in that 50 to kind of 2,000 ratio, but we are providing it in pretty much every street. You'll see it on both sides of the Common. You'll see it on the development side of Street B, which is the street in between the Virginia Tech site and the development site, and then on the north side of Street A because there are a lot of curb cuts to get into the garages and alleys on the other side of that street, which don't leave a lot of other room for on-street parking.
Other than the dedicated grocery parking, is all the retail parking going to be from the shared garage or the street spaces, I guess? Or is there parking elsewhere? Is it mainly the structure?
It's mainly the structure. We're working with Regency right now, because I think there's some concern that there may need to be parking under the individual blocks where there's underground parking, and it may just be a small amount of retail parking so that we can actually say that there's retail parking there.
My question's really around distance for people to walk from that garage out to your main area.
Sure.
People are just going to not want to walk that far sometimes, right?
Yeah. We've sort of honed in on that as a concern at this point.
Got it. Thanks.
Maybe you've answered it, but it sounds like the total number of parking spaces, you said a couple of thousand, is still sort of in flux. I mean, you had a minimum and a maximum number on housing units, bless you, but yet at the point where we have a minimum and a maximum on parking spaces overall?
Well, our hope to simplify it would be to peg the ratios and then take those ratios and tie it to the min's and maxes of each use and know what it is. Because obviously, if the ratios are ranging and the program numbers are ranging, it could be anywhere in there, in that range, and it would be very difficult to peg a number. So our...
I guess my question is, when would we likely be able to answer that question with at least some band of number?
As part of the S E E process, I think we would be locked into ratios and program min's and maxes, and then certainly as part of S E S P, we'd be locked into parking count numbers.
Okay. There?
I think you answered it, but it's going to flex. If we have more residential units, you would have more parking. If you had more hotel, you would have less additional parking. So I think it really depends on what that final application is for total square footage, but we'll lock in the ratio so that you know that you're getting the right amount for residential office or hotel.
Going back to that chart idea we talked about, so it sounds like ratios will be locked in at S E E, actual counts will be at S E S P?
That sounds right, and I think that originally that was kind of the plan, was we would know the general location and approximate numbers of parking spaces, but the final details would be done at S E S P when the uses are known in more detail and the exact size, et cetera.
So to reiterate my request of staff is, I guess, to figure out whether, how our code compares actual usage, I'd like to know just historically how our mixed-use buildings have performed, or even actually looking outside of Falls Church, if there's places near transit, I'd like to know what their parking code requirements have been and then their actual usage and patterns have been too. Because I don't know enough about it to say whether these are reasonable or not and whether their reductions are reasonable either, but I think I'd like the data to back that up.
And I think that would tie into the TDM study that the development team is doing as well to provide data to back that up and come to the reasonable conclusions as well.
And we've had interns go out and do actual data gathering on this in the last recent time, so we've got data on it.
So these are a series of street sections, which you see in the lower right is keyed to the plan and in the top is a section, and then a little axonometric kind of study in the bottom, starting with, you know, the main Commons Drive. You see the green in the center. You see travel lanes, a one-way loop on both sides. You see bike lane, you see parking lane, you see tree pits, you see free sidewalk and retail location. We have some more detailed study a little bit later of the café seating that came up in an earlier part of the conversation. We go to the next. They're all organized this way in terms of the section, the key and the axonometric study. These are the two public streets, again, Haycock shown on the left and Route 7 on the right. And there, again, organization into turn lanes, travel lanes, planting strip for trees and clear sidewalk. And if we go to the next, you'll start to see the internal streets, Street A and Street B, and that distribution of travel lane, travel lane and on-street parking where it occurs, the planting strip for the trees and the clear sidewalk, and then the building edge. You also see the introduction of the bike lanes and how those happen in side-by-side cycle track locations on Street B, getting back and forth to the school and how that is separated from vehicular traffic with a buffer zone and vertical pieces, and then another kind of 18 inches before you get to the sidewalk curb.
May I ask a question here?
Sure.
So questions, I love the separated bike lanes and the cycle track. Questions on the location of that on Street, the cycle track is on Street B?
Yes.
When it goes out to Haycock, how does that connect? Is there going to be like a Hawk signal for, I'm thinking about student access, especially people getting to school? Is that where we're proposing kind of a Hawk signal to cross Haycock or...
That is where we're proposing.
Correct. Yes. And crosswalks.
Maybe go a couple slides. I think that point might be easily, more easily seen in a plan that we have of the, I think maybe the next one is the, no, sorry. So here is where those different kinds of bike lanes happen. So that top diagram through section is the two-way cycle track, and then you'll see that in plan where that goes along Street B and hits Haycock at that location where the Hawk signal is proposed to get across Route 7.
And then for the non-cycle track bike path, I get the one that goes up through the Commons?
Right. Maybe stay where we were, sorry?
I've seen it done multiple ways, but sometimes you have a protected bike lane that's kind of buffered by a parked car. What's the thinking on doing it this way versus that way? I don't know, just pros and cons or...
So we have talked to staff, a great deal in planning staff, and tried to use the NACTO guidelines, which, you know, the technical term, I guess, is getting doored. So when the car door opens into the bike lane, it's not a good thing. So that was one piece of the equation, to put the bike lane on the opposite side of the parked cars so that there's no interference between opening car doors and bikes. And another piece of the equation is conversations with emergency services and fire department and their needs for clear space between, outside of the parked cars and how that can happen in the travel lane and gives them some overflow into the bike if they've got to maneuver in case of an emergency with a parked fire truck and firefighters moving around it.
They're really not very attractive, the ones in DC that they've done adjacent to the parked car lane, because you end up with those flexi-bollards there. And then despite the best efforts to keep cars out of there, I think it's sort of the natural place for FedEx and UPS to park as they're dropping off packages. So it's rarely ever accessible to bikes. You've got to sort of maneuver around cars that are trying to parallel park. So I think what we've done here, you may actually be able to get away without the flexi-bollards and do like a raised, you know, pavement or some sort of designation to show the bike lane that's not a visual, you know, impediment right in the middle of the main civic space.
And then any thought on having bike access, and I guess this is new Street B or, no, the one through the middle?
Through the middle. There was a lot of discussion with the school representatives on where they thought the route, the more likely route would be on B or on A, and I would say that that's probably not even 100% settled, but doing both and doing it on Route 7 seemed like overkill. So this was where there was a little bit more space to do on A to get a more generous cycle track and have a more generous buffer from traffic. There was a little bit more room there on the northern street than on the middle street. So that's sort of where the discussion is right now.
I assume the one at the top, that's also where the buses are coming in, I think, right?
Right. So that's where we've got Sean's ugly flexers in that case, just in that, right? They'll be better.
I was also thinking of just the middle schoolers. So I imagine high school might, you know, use the top one because that's the closest access to the school, but for middle school kids, especially with them being right on Route 7, I don't know how they feel about that, but it sounds like, is this precedent image meant to be that shared use path, the one at the bottom, right?
Yes.
It's like half sidewalk, half bike lane?
Right. With clearly designated places on the paving, but no sort of barrier in between.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Maybe, I think we've talked a lot about the sections, but maybe if we just go back to, to make sure I didn't miss anything on the sections. I think that was the section we talked about last. And then on the next one, this is the street sections to the school, shown at the middle school and then up towards, closer to the high school, also through the middle school, where you get a wider zone between the garage and the street, so just a couple sections through there. And then it's a little bit closer on the school side. And then I think the next series are just, since we're in this part of the plan, some ideas about screening and artwork and celebrating the schools as part of the skin treatment of the garage.
As you're talking about skin treatment, I've seen a couple local developments where the developer has worked with the schools for the screening during development to have student artwork on there. Have you talked to the schools about that at all?
We have definitely talked about the possibility of doing that and the interest, and that's certainly part of the conversation.
Okay.
It's not a set thing yet, but that really is what these are meant to illustrate. Is there an opportunity for school-generated art, student-generated art to be part of this?
Right. I was just talking right now about the short-term during construction.
Like the fencing.
The fencing, right. The fencing around during construction.
Don't know that we have had that conversation.
There was, when Mosaic was being built, there were some, Falls Church High School and Jeb Stuart High School had some great student murals that were part of the fencing. It'd be great if we could include those as well.
Yeah, we could look into that, for sure. Okay. Bike lanes we talked about, and then I think the next one is an idea about the café seating and that section through the Commons and the sidewalk adjacent to the retail that's concentrated on the Commons, and a couple of different ideas about where café seating could go. In option A, where it's closer to the curb, and option B, where it is closer to the storefront, but both options maintaining zones for the planting strip for the trees and free clear sidewalk access. And then there's a series in the landscape, so you see the public space of the Commons, the kind of terraces along A, along Street A and at the civic space, and then some of the more private courtyards in the residential blocks at A and D, and then some details of those if we go to the next series. So streetscaping with trees and just an overall view of that. Again, you see Street A, Street B, Route 7, Haycock and Commons, and then a few pages of details into sections of that if we go to the next one. So areas to use landscape, hardscape, softscape, kiosks to activate and program those places. So this is the north part of the Commons, so between Street A and Street B and Block C and Block D, with ideas about the water jets, the places where people gather, the places that might be more passive recreation, how some of that landscape and hardscape starts to interact with the retail kiosk and form a center there where Commons meets Street A. We go to the next, and then some illustrations. So there was, again, some discussion earlier about what the placemaking package would look like, and I think that will be an ongoing discussion, but this is really the kind of idea that we have of the placemaking. There's a commitment to a number of elements and what the character of those elements will be and what their general feel is going to be, and then they can be placed in more detail, but we'll commit to the numbers on that and get a real idea and feel for the flavor of those. If we go to the next, this is just the southern portion of the Commons, again, with a matching retail kiosk or a paired retail kiosk, hardscape, softscape, and the idea that as you get closer to Route 7, it's probably less of an activated kind of space and more of a gateway into the place and the city. And you start to see that in the southern part and is, you know, again, is the section for right at Route 7, the gateway piece to that. More character studies to give an idea of that feel and what it's like in those places and some of the key elements. And I think the next one might be the last piece. We've had some discussion with the city arborist and staff in getting into some... We've had some discussion with the city arborist and, and staff in, in getting into some details and studies about numbers of trees and canopy and, and commitment to that for urban forestry moving forward. I think that's it for the presentation part.
All right. Thank you very much. Questions, comments? Mr. Lichtenhouse?
Yep. So, guys, I was looking through all of this and one thing that I didn't see in relation to ingress, egress off the site from a pedestrian perspective was connectivity to the Virginia site next, Virginia Tech site next door. I mean, I understand that they're, you know, going through their own redevelopment contemplation. When that happens and at what point, I don't know. But I do think it's important for us to, to continue to think about students that may be at that academic institution in the daytime that may want to visit the site because it may not be redeveloped at that time. And then also just understanding that, you know, once you've created this kind of critical mass and it's a, it's a draw from more than just a local perspective, but a regional perspective, that, you know, there will be, there will need to be some access more than likely contemplated through that site. I understand that that requires you guys to communicate and coordinate with, with Virginia Tech. But I didn't see any crosswalks over the, kind of the bus route coming in or any access to that Virginia Tech site that may contemplate people coming either from that site or from Metro across that site into, into this development.
Yeah. We've already had a couple of meetings with, with Regency and we're going to continue the dialogue. I think that there will be crosswalks in the location once we understand their plan a little bit more. Right now, there's a little bit of a discussion on the Commons Drive. And I, I think their preliminary plans had the Commons Drive sort of shifted. So, I think we need to react to what they're doing. And we're, we're keeping Commons Drive in the location that it's at and just need to figure out how that interacts with whatever their site plan is. So, it, I think we need a plan for the interim if it's not developed in the same timeframe is what we're looking at as far as crosswalks. And then sort of the future based on whatever the, the future plan is that they come up with. And we're looking beyond that on what the connections are on the Womata site, which as you know, came out with the, the RFP or is coming out with an RFP for the garage site.
Yeah, it's just in everyone's best interest, as you guys can imagine, to attract as many people to this development as absolutely possible, make it as inviting as possible across your jurisdictional boundaries as well. On the, the utility front, you guys undergrounding everything? Obviously inside of the development, yes, but exterior, in between the development and the high school, are those utilities going to be undergrounded as well? Or there'd be anything above? I just saw in one of the diagrams that there was some marking for above-ground utility, above-ground power.
On one of these drawings?
Yeah, I couldn't decipher if that actually existed or if that was just?
Are you familiar with utilities?
A little bit. I, I don't think there, we have civil, maybe I'll.
Hi, I'm Antonette Isherwood with Walter Phillips. So, we are undergrounding along the street frontages and it's also part of kind of the NVTA grant scope that we have to underground to where the pump, there's a, there are poles by the pump station that Fairfax Water owns. So, all along 7, we're undergrounding those lines and then to the city limits on Haycock.
So, what about specifically the school road? So, this, the, the road that the buses come down to drop off in the morning between the developments and next to the garage and the schools? Will those utilities be undergrounded as well?
I, yeah, I would assume so. I'm not sure. So, the school road is being built by the school, but I would imagine their, all their new services will go underground. So, it should be part of that.
Yeah. Just one of the concerns I have, and I'm sure this comes from a construction planning perspective, is if we're going to underground there, just given the timing of when the school's delivered and when you guys start the project, that we're not having to tear the road up again.
Right.
You know, as buses are coming down because that high school will deliver and we'll need to use that road before, before the development's delivered.
Yeah. So, we're having coordination meetings bi-weekly with the school and a lot of that discussion is our phasing and timing for construction.
Great, okay. And then streetlights. So, I saw some markings for streetlights along Haycock and Leesburg, which I think is great. I think it's incredibly charming for, for the development, especially in the evening time. Are you guys planning streetlights on the interior? Is most of that just going to be kind of retail storefront lighting at night? There's streetlights throughout the interior? I'm talking engineering, like she knows.
Well, no, I think the answer is, I mean, it should be yes. I don't, I don't know if we've designed them yet, but I think we would be looking for something that's not a Cobra head, but you know, more in keeping with the pedestrian scale. So, you'd have both the street light and the, the light coming from the retail to illuminate the pedestrian route.
Okay.
And in the Commons as well.
Right.
Great. And then have you guys decided on operators yet for the hotel and senior living that you can announce?
No, we, we have, we have a short list of, it's right now two to three on the senior side. And then we're, we're actually circling back on the hotel front to, to gauge interest because there's, there's right now a little bit more interest than we, we initially thought. So, we're looking at four brands right now on the hotel side.
That's positive.
Yeah.
That's great, okay. And as to plan, as you guys lock down some of these operators, I mean, would that be reported back as part of this process? Will there be kind of a big avail? I think there's a lot of folks that are interested to understand who may be committed to this site from a, from a leasing or an operational perspective or operating perspective.
Sure. I think we would communicate through the city manager and, and back to council when the time's appropriate. We, we wouldn't issue a press release until we, you know, share it with, in this room. But yeah, I think we would want on both of those to make a formal announcement with the operator of, of the, the senior in the hotel at a, at a time that's beneficial for everybody. So, as, as soon as possible, I would think.
Okay. Fantastic. All right. Thanks.
All right. Other comments? Ms. Hardy?
It's going back to the ground floor use diagram. So, one observation is, and this is probably intentional, is majority of your retail is kind of interior facing, kind of onto the Commons. So, it feels very mosaic-like where majority of their retail is kind of internally facing. Given that we've got so much frontage on Route 7, with the exception of that grocery store, is there more thinking of using that corner? That Haycock and Broad corner kind of being high up on the hill just seems like a really prominent corner to not do anything except multifamily?
The, I wish I had the answer sitting here right now. I think the garage, the garage and the, the grocer-retail on that Block A right now, we're, we're sort of going through different design permutations. I, I think, given the importance of the grocer and access to it from the site, we're sort of, we're torn between whether it wants to have an entrance on the, on the Commons Drive or whether it should have a entrance on Leesburg Pike side. I think in, in any case, it's going to have two entrances. One, one option that we had looked at is sort of at the corner of Commons Drive and Leesburg Pike is one primary entrance and then a secondary pedestrian entrance at the corner of Haycock and Leesburg Pike. So, I mean, it actually runs that full length. A lot of the grocers have sort of grab and go and café components too. So, I think we'd be looking at the, at the front-facing or the Leesburg Pike-facing part of that store. And to the extent that we can get it down to Haycock, that some of that retail merchandising for the store would be visible through the windows and it, you know, hopefully spill out onto the street on whichever frontage that we end up with, but.
Besides obviously setting up the grocer for success, I'm also thinking kind of long-term, you know, we hope that this catalyzes development across the street with the buyer property and the Fritt property. And so, I think having that corner, I guess, be more prominent feels important for those long-term reasons as well, besides making sure that obviously the grocer has good visibility. So, it's kind of one observation is, in general, it feels very internally facing, especially where most of the vibrancy is and whether we should think about it using the Leesburg Pike-Haycock intersection as well. My second question is on that exterior streetscape. I know you showed streetscape sections and Antonette mentioned the use of the NVTA grant. Are you all designing the exterior streetscape and then also using the grant? Or are we using the grant? Or how is that interaction going to work?
And I'll let the, the city staff speak to it as well. But we are coordinating to kind of understand the full scope of the NVTA grant. And we're planning to meet with NVTA staff to make sure we're all under the same understanding of what the grant's going to be used towards. But it is going to be for streetscape elements. It's a lot of not only the undergrounding, but really improving that whole transportation pedestrian network. So, it's going to be some of those elements that are in the streetscape as well.
So, while obviously the streetscape on Route 7 and Haycock is important, I think one of the big selling points to both the Fairfax County neighbors and our own residents was actually being able to cross the street to access Metro. So, we heard a lot of people who use kind of from Shreve to Haycock, crossing Route 7 is just really dangerous currently. And so, I want to make sure that we have some money reserved for people actually getting to the other side of Route 7 too.
Yes, yeah, that is part of it. Intersection improvements in the crosswalks at the intersection and also with the signal that we're adding to the Chestnut Street intersection. It's going to be part of, we're adding some crosswalks there as well.
Great. Last question. So, I know that this kind of senior housing little extension, I think you, you guys called it like the finger, is in this latest iteration. Are there alternatives to it or what's, is that really added because of the extra square footage we added for senior housing?
Yeah. Nobody really likes the finger and even, even the operators. So, I, I think we're looking for other solutions to get the, it was in response to trying to get the square footage for the senior that I think is the program that they're, they're seeking. But I think there's other ways to do it that doesn't require the, the extension down there.
I'm glad you guys said you don't like it, so I don't like it. It just feels like it intrudes on the street and obviously is very close to the school. So, as you guys think of other options, I think we'd like to see those too. Great. Thank you.
All right. Other questions, comments?
Thanks. This is a really little one, but on about the second page where you have your list of the members of the school board, they have a new chair and vice chair. So, you might want to update that to get that one up to date. I can't find the right map in front of me, but one of these maps has, well, several of them. You've got Street B and it says extent of SEE application, not the recommended ownership of land boundary. So, we're still assuming that Street B is the street, the access street to the school. But not, so how, but it's still in the SEE application. And then the second part of that is one of these has the turnaround here off of Street A and it says the schools will pay for that? That will be paid for out of school funding? I can't find the exact one. And I'm just wondering where that came from. Turnaround, it says school drop-off turnaround to be constructed by City of Falls Church School Board.
So, that was discussed at the last infrastructure coordinating meeting?
Uh-huh.
And do you want to speak to that?
My name's, my name's Brian Tomeno. I'm with Tori Gallison Partners as well. We did speak to that at the thing. We, we put that note in, it was a little bit of a misunderstanding or ambiguous, actually. And we, I think, resolved it at that meeting that development team would, would design and build it and pay for.
Okay. So, that'll be a change.
It will be. And I, I think the, the thinking of the development team was that that really is quite important to the plaza. And so, their assumption was that the schools would really want to control that and design it properly. So, that, I think that was the thinking, that was part of the discussion that happened. It seems that the schools are more interested in not paying for it, but that seems to be.
Timing, I think, was a big part of it too. It would be done by the time.
The, the practical aspect of the timing, that street's not going to be built until after the high school's open and the plaza is complete. So, that's the other aspect of it.
And, and we did discuss, we're going to coordinate with the designers of the school, that connection in particular, as well as the connection of the school road, you know, along, along the Virginia Tech parcel and how that interacts with their plaza and their streets connection.
And I just have a further question about Block C, which has, that's one of the things that changed from the first time that we saw this and the second time that we saw this. Because originally the music venue was closer to the school and the hotel was on the opposite side. Is that something that is still in flux or is this where you think we're going to be set in stone?
We think that that, that still is in flux. I think part of the conversation about the blocks flexing and the blocks changing sizes is what happened to Block C. Block A got a little bit wider to accommodate some of the grocer loading and it was 40,000 and now it's 43,000. So, things flex a little bit this way. The Block B got a little wider north-south to try to accommodate some of the senior programs. So, C got squeezed a little bit and that's where things sort of went up. So, but, but all of that is still in flux, that those blocks can flex kind of north-southeast-west within a reasonable range. And that would obviously squeeze some blocks and, and give more room to other blocks. But all of that is still part of the, the, the planning permutations.
So, my request on that one, just me, not anybody else here, I don't know if they agree or not, but I would prefer that one turned a little bit so that the music venue is what was closer to the school and not the hotel or the lower part that is the music venue. I have no idea if anyone else agrees with me or anyone at the schools agrees with me, but.
Mr. Duncan?
Okay. So, three quick things. One, you said connected to its adjacencies. That was a nice phrase. That speaks to Ms. Hardy's concern, which I'd also raised some time ago about that corner at Broad and Haycock meeting the buyer properties and the fellow realty properties in the future, you know, fabulous days of Falls Church 20 years down the line, when that is going to be Falls Church. That's going to be the corner. When you hit that corner, you're going to look all around you and see splendid, you know, interconnected, activated, you know, ground floor retail. So, yeah, let's try to not have that just be, you know, a garage and, you know, an entrance to a grocery that mostly what you see is shopping carts. I mean, I think we did pretty well with Harris Teeter. It presents nicely to the street and it's kind of interesting things you can see in there when you drive by it. And that would be the way to go, not like what we did with Rite Aid in a previous generation, which, you know, Bassack's front door to the parking lot in the rear and has nothing of any visual interest. The second, what Mr. Lichtenhouse said about shadow studies. Yeah, I get it that the sun is low on the horizon in the winter, but, you know, whatever you can possibly do, if you're torn between, you know, keep turning yourself in the direction of making that corner something like what you've heard here. As low as possible so that it shades as little of the school as possible for as much as possible of the year. The third thing, you all call, call it what you want, I don't care as long as you get it rented. But to me, kiosk sounds like sort of a temporary seasonal thing. And I don't think that's what we envision here. And I guess what you envision, I mean, I guess it's an industry, you know, phrase, but, you know, boulevard retail, I don't know. Something that sounds a little more permanent, not like what they put up temporarily at, at the rest and station, you know, when it first opened. They literally had those little pop-up bookstores and scarf shops and so forth. They're kind of cool and now they're gone because they were supposed to go. You know, the picture that you have of the ice cream place looks like the biggest ice cream place, you know, inside the Beltway. So, to me, kiosk is a little modest, but like I say, call it what you want as long as you get it leased for a year-round use. Which takes me, I guess, to my larger point, which may be more directed at staff, I'm not sure. But it speaks to the kind of expectations that we have and that we set for the community about your commitments to your anchor retail uses. You know, our past practice here has been, you know, if you say you're going to have a grocery, we spend months arguing about, you know, whether the milk truck and eggs are going to be backing up before we ever even approve the project. And I guess I'm asking at some point pretty early on, because this is, you know, we're having a good deliberative process, but it is moving pretty rapidly. I want to make sure we get the question in fairly early, like what's the guarantee it's going to be a grocery? You know, you, you get a letter, that's good. You announce it, that's great. But, you know, we've seen before, press releases don't always guarantee future outcomes. So, you know, we just need to have some pretty firm language in there that says it's not going to become a, another fitness use, you know, because that's not really what we need. We need, I think a grocery would be good here because you're going to move a couple of thousand more people in here and they're going to need to eat and Giant's not going to be able to handle it all. So, I think that's fine, but, and similarly for your ground floor retail along the Commons Drive. You know, we've had buildings where we had ground floor retail and we had language in there that says, by God, it's got to be real retail. And then a few years later, it's still empty and the owner comes back and says, you know what? I'd really like to put a dentist's office in there because that's just what wants to be there. And so, we've got some language about how to make that not happen if we, and certainly up here, we don't want that to happen. We want this to be, you know, the last best stand for retail on planet Earth. You know, whatever retail is going to be in the future, we want it to be here at this location. So, some of this goes into a little bit of what Mr. Snyder was asking about. But I think those are questions that we ought to be able to answer to the community fairly early on in the process. Like what are the buttons, belts and suspenders on the retail promises that we're making? Don't worry about the residential because the residential will happen. I mean, I'm, I'm interested in the residential and like the micro-units, like the seniors, that's all good. But I'm more concerned about what's really going to happen on the main retail use, uses.
Okay. Thanks.
All right. Thanks very much. I've got a few comments. Does anyone else have anything they want to say? Mr. Snyder? they want to say? Mr. Schneider?
Yeah, so what's the tree canopy going to be here, or what's the percentage?
You're welcome to... So in this diagram, we're showing 140 trees at 17 and a half square foot per tree at 20 years is the 24,500 square feet.
And what percentage of the site?
5.5% of the overall site. Five and a half percent of the overall site.
So what are we requiring for tree canopy for residential?
Residential is, residential zones require 20% tree canopy within 10 years?
20%. So we're living with 5% on this site?
Well...
Seems kind of low.
Commercial districts, we don't...
No, I know. We permitted, we permitted almost no tree canopy in prior sites. I'm not saying that's the way to go.
Right.
I'm just, I'm, that's sort of interesting, considering the interest in tree canopy. Yeah, so I want to echo what other council members have said as well, but I want to go to, the city staff estimated a certain net revenue generation, and so I'm interested in what your assumptions are. Your assumptions are it's a grocery store hotel, fully occupied, fully functioning on day one. In other words, are we going to get that on day one, or are we going to get that on day, the five-year plus day one? So I want to set the expectations for revenue generation to be as realistic as possible. And what are the assumptions based into that on the positive side? And then on the cost side, are we estimating anything, including increased public service costs due to the proximity of these residential units to both the middle school and the high school? So as we go forward, these numbers take on a life of their own, and I'm very interested in knowing what the assumptions were on the positive side and what they were on the negative side, and are they realistic? And if we like them, how do we then mold this project procedurally as well as substantively to generate that?
The, so Becky Witzman does her fiscal impact analysis, and she'd be the best person to come and give you a good briefing on all of the assumptions that are made. We did use the model as we've used it for other mixed-use projects, so this is not a new model. It's the model we're used to, and we now have about 14 years of experience in using it for projects and then looking backwards to test it against.
Right, but the model doesn't include a major residential development right next to the high school and the junior high. All I'm trying to do is get it realistic. I'm not trying to make a point here, except I just, I want to, if when we, I want to know what the basis is for the numbers we're putting out there, and if we like those numbers, how do we make sure we get there? That's all.
Yeah. And the pupil generation, we can go through in detail how we do that, so that people, we don't want it to be black box. We want people to understand what's the data that we look at, and then people can make judgments on it.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, I've got a few comments, if you'll indulge me. Could you go back to the retail, or the ground floor plan? So I share the concerns about the project being very inward-looking. I have to say, Mosaic has its appeal, but I'm not a huge fan of it, in part because there are no entrances around the periphery of it. I mean, you basically drive in and then you're in, you know, kind of Disneyland, but you can't, it doesn't invite you in from the outside. And I have some concerns of the plan as I see it right now. I guess I would like to ensure, request that you have a number of retail entrances along the facade, along the out facades, you know, in other words, along Leesburg Pike and Haycock Road, so that it's not, you just sort of drive in, and then once you're there, you kind of experience it. I want, I want to have this so that people want to go across the street to the buyer project when it redevelops, and the Fritt project when that redevelops, so they all work together. And it's not like you have to drive in to experience this place. And so I guess I would say, I would hope that you could have a number of retail entrances along the major roads, you know, physical entrances, and glass transparency, even possibly outdoor seating. And look, I know it's not optimal in some ways, but I still think it invites people in. Same thing on Haycock. It doesn't look like you show much retail at all on Haycock, and I get how that may not be your primary retail area, but I think it would be good to consider, even if it's service retail or some kind of weaker retail, to line Haycock Road with some kind of retail. Fritt are masters of retail, and that project, that property will redevelop at some point. It'd be nice to bookend Haycock with retail on both sides of the street. And so I think I would ask that of you as well. Let me see what else I've got here as far as questions go. The grocery store, I had heard the possibility that it may want to go in a little bit earlier than maybe originally planned, and I don't know if that's something you want to discuss or not, but I think at some point, if that is a hope that things could move quickly to get them in there, that's a conversation maybe we would all be, like to have with you. And so I don't know if you're prepared at this time to talk about the timing of that at all.
Yeah. Nate, do you want to... You're probably better equipped. I think their timing, though, coincides with the early delivery of the, of the high school, so I think we were trying to make those...
No, I think...
You need a mic for the public. There's tons of people watching on TV.
So I think, yeah, for the grocery, I think the timing is going to be what it is. We're going to get turned over, and if we keep with the schedule that the school is being turned over, I think at the end of the day, if it ends up being pushed with the different grocers that we're talking to, it's, it's not a big deal, and the grocers could deal with a later turnover for that schedule.
Okay, so the idea that I think some of us have heard is that someone might want to come in earlier as opposed to later, and to try to kind of aggressively move to free up that space for them. Is that not something we ought to be thinking about then?
I don't think that's something we need to focus on.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
So also, I want to just kind of affirm what I think some of my colleagues have said, maybe more explicitly. The idea and hope and expectation is that the office and hotel will be simultaneous essentially delivery, not that they're an afterthought, that they'll be, you know, rolling in once the residential's stabilized or whatever, but this is all one thing. And so I don't know what the mechanisms are to ensure that that really is essentially a simultaneous project, you know, that things don't happen kind of residential here, and then we're going to wait a little while, and we're going to do this. But the idea is that this is all one phase that'll happen essentially together. And so I just want to confirm that with you and make sure there's mechanisms in place so that that is the understanding of all of us.
Yeah, I think we're working on the language in the C A. It's certainly our intention that Phase One is delivered all within Phase One. I think our primary concern is just financeability of the office. If, you know, for some reason the world turns upside down and we can't get financing, that would be sort of our primary concern, but it's what we're working through with the city attorney and with city manager.
Okay. Well, that's, that's something that's very important, I think, to us in council and as the community. So I just want to make sure we set expectations. I think our expectation would be that that would all happen together and simultaneously. I don't know what mechanism or language we need, but I think that's certainly an expectation on our, at least our side of the table. So I know this is a bit early for that, but do you have any ideas, Murphy, on facade materials? What kind of, we're looking at a masonry project, or what, what sort of thing are you...
I think it is going to depend on the use, right? So we would think the office would probably have a little bit more glass, and I think this will obviously be a huge part of the S E S P discussion. Our initial thoughts and just the initial discussion, I think you probably saw it in some of the renderings, is that this is primarily a masonry, that this is a brick, probably some version of red brick, to have some kind of identity and touchstone with Falls Church history, but that's a really kind of early notion, and I don't think there's an idea of doing that in a historicist kind of way, but I think that that's a good place to start the conversation and probably a base kind of material. But we also don't want to deliver one thing that looks exactly the same. I think Sean and Pean Hoffman's experience at the Wharf bears that off, that bears that out, that they're cousins and they're related, and there's a material palette that works building to building, block to block, but there's enough texture built into it so that it feels authentic and different. So brick, glass, probably some kind of other kind of panels mixed in as well.
Okay. In terms of the civic space, the civic use, we didn't hear much about that today. Could you elaborate a little bit more on what your intentions are as far as the civic space and as far as commitments go with respect to that?
Sure. It's, we're still trying to work it out. I think the intention would be that it's primarily a music venue, but it could all, it can also serve as a civic function for large group meetings, whether that's through us as the association and the operator of the project, or through the tenant that's running the music venue. That's still something that we're, we're talking through with the one operator that we're discussing it with. Another thought, too, is because the hotel is there, it may actually be able to flex into sort of event space for the hotel, so it could become sort of a three, three uses so that it's not, I think the difficulty with the music venue just on its own is it'll be difficult to program 365 days of music in Falls Church. I mean, if you look at State Theater, it's sort of challenged to sort of keep the venue full, and I, you know, that's something that we're looking at realistically, but I think there are a lot of events, whether it's city events, school events, other civic events that could use the space. So it's civic, it's event rental, it's music. It could, you know, have something to do with hotel for large hotel events where the meeting space in the hotel is overfilled, and, you know, they can do keynote kind of things in there. But I wish I had a better answer, but I think there's a lot of dynamic uses there that are pretty interesting. The music school, if we move forward with that, I think that, that could be another user for that space as well for recitals, so.
Okay. I think that's something of great interest to city council and also the community, so if we can continue that discussion as you proceed with your ideas, that'd be great. Could you give a little explanation about your ideas about shared parking, how that would work in terms of the various uses and synergies and the like?
I'll take a stab at it. I think we, we do it at the Wharf. It's, it's not an analogous project by any means, but I think that we have 1,300 parking spaces in our Phase One for about two and a half million square feet of development, so if you looked at parking ratios, it wouldn't make any sense on its face, leaving the Anthem aside, because it's really its own, its own animal. I think the, the thing that we enjoy quite a bit is the Wharf is popular on nights and weekends for restaurants or going out, and the, the lion's share of our parking is, the office demand is huge during the day, so we, we actually use that office parking. At 6:00, most of the offices clear out, which is a nice synergy with the retail and the evening weekend-type users. And I think we'll see a little bit of that here with the, with the office building. We have to build the three per thousand in order to get an office tenant to move in there, but that's, those spaces in the night, nighttime or in the weekends will be empty, which I think will fill the need for the, for the retail. So I think office and retail are naturals. I think hotel doesn't take nearly as much as residential or office would. I think we have four per thousand at the, at the Wharf, and we have a hard time filling that up. I think this will be a little bit more auto-centric, so I think it, you know, the hotel will have some drive-in guests, but I think the uses that we've programmed here versus just a standalone office park or residential complex, they're, they're all going to feed off each other, and I think we have the, the right amount. I don't think we're underparked by any means, and I, I think the, the uses will have a natural sort of shared parking occur.
Yeah, I think, too, if, on the underparking issue, there's really no place for you to go. I mean, because it's, it's not like you spill out in a neighborhood, it's kind of its own animal, and so in some ways, I think you guys really have to get it right for your own purposes, as much as anything. Couple other thoughts for you. Do you have any concerns about the retail kind of being spread out in that promenade on both sides of this sort of wide green area? Does that give you guys any pause at all? Typically, you want to put retail kind of closer together, so it sort of interplays and feeds off each other. Do you have concerns about kind of the width of the, the green between them and the idea of people kind of coming back and forth?
No, I, I mean, I think, yeah, two-sided retail makes the most sense. At the Wharf, we managed to get away with one-sided retail just because we had the water out there, and I think a lot of people thought it wouldn't succeed. We have true kiosks, so those are the smaller 200-square-foot versions on the opposite side, and we tried to put buildings on the opposite side wherever possible. I think what, what we need to do here to make this successful is the, I think kiosk is an unfortunate name, too, because what we're talking about in the middle is probably 1,200 to 1,500 square feet. It's an ice cream store that you can go in and sit down, or a coffee shop that you can go in and sit down. So it's more like inline retail that's sitting in the center of the park. And because of that, I think it sort of links the two sides and encourages you to not only walk up one side but cross over and then come back down the other. Clarendon Commons, sort of a similar, I hate to use that as an example because we're aiming much higher than that, but I think that the proximity of one side to the other is close enough to make it feel like you're in one place, and I think with the distance that we've got across there, it's going to feel very intimate and very close. It's not a big, big wide street. That's why we tried to minimize the street width in there.
Okay.
And I'd say that the, the width of the actual common space was very carefully calibrated to try to think of those things and use other successful retail models where that, that kind of things happens. I think Clarendon Commons is one that we've talked about, but even you could imagine a Sherrlington with a more activated Sherrlington space. Santana Row is a, is a Fritt one out west that we've talked a lot about. That's a very successful, similarly sized space, but we had a lot of early discussion about should it be wider, should it be narrower, what's the comfortable amount of space to make it usable and active in the middle and connect retail across. So it's very much on our minds.
And that's, that's why the, sorry, Murphy, but that's why the programming's important in the middle. I think, you know, put in the water feature or put in the human chess or whatever, whatever we end up with is the sort of placemaking strategy, and then programming events. If you do a farmer's market or that sort of thing, the obvious location is out there. So if you program it actively, frequently, I think that that'll become the draw in the center that links one side to the other.
Okay. I do have concerns about the garage and the garage facade, even putting banners and school things on it. I mean, that is the entrance to our brand-new school and our middle school for that matter. And so I guess I would just ask that you give some great care to it and maybe, you know, significant upgrade in materials that you might normally see, and other innovative or creative ideas about how to make that really fit in, because precast concrete is just not, you know, it is kind of what it is, and at least some of the images appear to be essentially precast with some banners in front of it. And I guess my expectation, hope would be that we'd be doing a significant upgrade to what your typical garage would look like. It is, as I say, to us, a major entrance to one of our major civic buildings, a brand-new high school. So again, I'd really be looking for some real thought and care as to how you treat the garage. So we have bike share. I guess, Mr. Shields, is bike share going in at all in this project? Is going on the other side? We're about to roll bike share out, I guess, you know, any minute now, basically. What, where is bike share in relation to this project?
The location of the bike share station is in the parking lot closest to Haycock Road, and I think the plan is to go ahead and install it and have it up and running, and then when construction starts, then we'll relocate it to the most appropriate spot.
Okay. I might certainly like to see bike shares have a major place in your project and maybe more than one site. It seems to me like an ideal location for bike share. So a couple other just quick points. I presume the school has seen the S E E. Have they gotten a preview and had a chance to make some preliminary comments?
They have received it, but they have not had a chance to discuss it as a body, and they've not been briefed on it. But that will happen soon. I think we have that date set.
March 12th. At their regular meeting, they'll be presented it by the developer, and they would have had it for over a month at that point, so we'll expect to have a good discussion with them at that time.
Yeah, I'd be very solicitous of their comments and concerns. This is, you know, two of our schools are there, and it's, so it's very important. I'd also echo the comments about coordinating with Rushmark and Virginia Tech and Womata. I think, I mean, it's in your own best interest, frankly, but getting good connectivity to the metro, I think, is really critical of the success of this project and really having everything work together. I presume you've had those conversations to date?
Yeah, we, we have started the dialogue with Rushmark and Womata and...
Is there any idea of, of like improving it even as an interim step in terms of the way to metro, so it's not kind of this giant industrial... way to metro, so it's not kind of this giant industrial parking lot? Or is it going to be that until something major happens on the Womata site?
I think they think something major is happening on the Womata site concurrent with the Virginia Tech and the, and the Rushmark property. So I, I think their goal would be to do it all at the same time. I think we need to look and see if, if it, if it doesn't happen according to that schedule or it becomes a multi-phase plan, if there's a way to improve access to Womata. Obviously, getting through the Virginia Tech site is paramount in order to at least get to the parking lot at Womata, but there may be improvements that can be made on the Womata parcel on an interim basis if they're not proceeding with the plan.
Yeah, I mean, I suspect they might be a little bit slower-moving than, than everyone else, and if that's the case, I think I would certainly encourage you, and I think it's in Falls Church's best interest to try to find the best way we can to get as quickly and, you know, ahead of getting access to metro for your patrons and just for residents of Falls Church as a whole.
Okay.
Boards and commissions, is it going to piecemeal the boards and commissions? Is there any idea of maybe getting everybody together to kind of let there be some synergies between the boards and commissions?
So the proposed schedule that we'll be finalizing this week is we'll be having five to six meetings, so the school board would have their own meeting, but then all the other boards and commissions would be grouped in groups of two to four. So for example, the Planning Commission, Tree Commission, Environmental Sustainability, and Architecture Advisory Board would be one group, and so they kind of have overlapping areas of interest usually. And so another example would be Housing, or, yeah, Housing Commission and the CACT. And so, you know, we're trying to, trying our best to group boards with similar interests, but then also combine meetings to where everybody gets a chance to review it because of our accelerated schedule, so.
Okay, great, thanks. I think that's all I've got. Does anyone else have any further, Mr. Snyder?
Yeah, so to staff, what's the period of time from the time the board and commission reviews are finished? And then the projected vote from our standpoint? Is it two weeks? Is it a month?
No. Um, it's about, so I have the deadline for board and commission comments April 5th, and then April 5th. And so, and then the final action by council is scheduled May 28th. So that gives approximately two months to, for staff to compile the board and commission comments. We'll also have staff comments, and then the developer can take that and do some proposed revisions based on those comments, and then we would bring it at least for a couple, or at least one work session with you guys, get kind of comments on all that, and then possibly, maybe if there's time, have another round of, I don't have my schedule in front of me, but I think I've built in two council work sessions prior to the, the second hearing.
It sounds pretty good, because I want to make sure that the council has the ability and the time to review the comments from the boards and commissions, and our ultimate responsibility, among other things, is the financial elements of this, which isn't necessarily the principal focus of a lot of the boards and commissions. So want to make sure we have an adequate amount of time to review the documents, review wherever the project has evolved to and otherwise affected in that way, so. So you're, you're assuming like minimum of like four weeks for us to take a look and then sort of?
Yeah, I think the, I think I had a work session mid to late April, and that would, ideally, we should have DRC comments back and all the board and commission comments back. So, but I'll include, I can include a more in-depth schedule in the report for next week.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Unless there's anything else, thank you all for coming out and all the fine work you put into it to date.
Thank you.
We appreciate it, and we'll continue this dialogue. Thank you. All right. Okay. Does anyone want to take a break? Do you want to take a five-minute break, anybody, or keep on rolling? All right, we're going to take a five-minute break then.
And the next up is the subdivision, and so they might be interested in that as well, but.
All right, thank you. All right, we are reconvened. Let's keep on truckin'. So our next item is the subdivision of this same land we're talking about. Is that right, Mr. Shields?
That is correct.
All right, what say you?
And on this, we, we have had a discussion with the school board about this. We did that, in fact, at 6:30 PM tonight, and, and really, it was the same purpose as tonight's meeting, is to let you see a draft plat, and then also let you know that action on this is not needed tonight, but it's going to be needed soon, like, you know, in the next two weeks to begin the subdivision process. And so maybe what we can do just for our staff report, we'll do just like we did with the school board. I'll walk you through some of the points on this plat, and then Ms. Aubrey will discuss the process by which it is considered and the steps that have to be taken for it. Carol's been instrumental in this discussion as well. So there's, there's one, on one side, there's a clean version, and this is, in fact, what a subdivision plat looks like, and on the other side, it has the additional details so you can see what's underneath those lines. One of the key things that should be noted at the beginning, the subdivision is not about who owns what. The subdivision is simply drawing the lines where they need to be so that we can take then future actions to determine who owns what. But with that basic orientation, then if you take a look at the simpler parcel plat, we can just walk through them and describe them briefly. Parcel A is where the football field is today. That is titled to the city council, the city of Falls Church. Parcel B is roughly where the mulch yard is today and parts of the tennis courts. That also is titled to the city council. Parcel C is titled to the school board, and the original parcel C includes parcel F, which is out in Haycock and in Route 7. And that parcel simply reflects the current dedications that have already been made to VDOT, which still exists along Route 7, and on Haycock, those VDOT right-of-way dedications have conveyed naturally to the city with the boundary adjustment. Parcel E of just over 8.8 acres is the land contemplated for the leasehold. Ultimately, down the road, there would be carve-outs of parcel E for the condominium portions of that. Parcel D is the garage, and that is carved out as a separate parcel so that we can ultimately down the road treat it separately, and the school board has expressed its interest to, at a minimum, have a reversion measure so that the land would come back to the school board if, if the parking garage use is no longer there. They have stated their preference that they actually have a ground lease, or they retain fee ownership of parcel D and do a, a ground lease for the garage. We have noted for the school board that that would be very difficult and very complicated to have two separate ground leases on the property, and, but we, decisions haven't been made, and again, the subdivision is not about ownership, it's really just about where the lines are so that we can determine future ownership. But that decision also is on the critical path, and we're working hard with the school staff to understand all the issues, and so we hope to have, you know, more dialogue about that, more information about the ownership structure of parcel D. I would just note also for parcel E, and this has been discussed throughout this process, maybe not so much recently though, is that we have envisioned that the EDA would be the city council's agent for executing the 99-year ground lease, and that is due to the 40-year general restriction for, on municipalities to do long-term ground leases. EDAs has typically, in around Virginia, been the, the way that local governments accomplish those long-term ground leases. So that's an overview of what the parcels are and what this plat looks like. I would just note also that Walter Phillips did the city's initial survey for the, for the site, and the city is contracting with Walter Phillips for these subdivision documents. It's all for the city's interest, but the school, the city is managing that contract. Ms. Aubrey?
Um, I'll just walk through some of the code requirements for why we need to do a subdivision plat. Chapter 38 of the city code contains the requirements that are needed for preliminary and final plats, and we are needing one because we, we are dividing land into two or more parcels, and ultimately, we will consolidate two or more lots. So the process for review of subdivisions are that once one gets submitted, it gets reviewed by staff and the historical commission for naming purposes, and then ultimate approval is from the planning commission after all the provisions have been met. In addition, chapter 48, which is the zoning ordinance of the city code, within site, the site plan section states that a site plan, when it covers more than one lot, a subdivision plat is needed to bind the properties to the site plan. So this is important in terms of the George Mason High School site plan that they are going through right now, and we're working with them on the requirements that would be needed in terms of a plat, kind of making sure we're all in line with what needs to be shown. So the goal is to have the subdivision plat approved concurrently with the George Mason High School site plan, and that's estimated to be early May from Planning Commission. They would get their site plan approval, and then it could be recorded after that in time for the May 28th SCE and comprehensive agreement approvals. So again, this is dependent on getting a submission of a subdivision application very soon, late this month or early March, and then it can run through the process of staff review and going to the historic commission, and then necessary property, adjacent property owner notice requirements, and then Planning Commission, I think I had in late or early May. So that's kind of the summary of what the subdivision process requires and the importance of coming to agreement on how the lines are shown so that we can have the proper plat documents prepared and proceed.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Vice Mayor Connolly?
The, the lines for parcel A and B are existing parcel lines?
Correct.
Is there a reason why we wouldn't combine them into a single parcel?
That was a question the school board asked as well, and we need to keep them extant so that they actually can be conveyed, if that is the intent. I mean, the numbers are, parcel A and B is almost exactly what's being used in parcel E and D. They're like a tenth of an acre off, and so notionally, it's a swap. Council's conveying those two parcels, and parcel E and D would convey to the city council. Now, that has never really, we've talked, we've been thinking that's the way this would go, but we do actually need a read on that. Is, is that generally the council's view, that that's how we should proceed with this? There, you know, the Wreckin' Parks Advisory Board has always enjoyed the ownership being in the city's name so that they have a kind of a hook when it comes time to making sure it's programmed for Wreckin' Park uses. We do have a memorandum of understanding that's being refreshed right now with the school administration on Wreckin' Park uses, and I think we all feel pretty comfortable. We're all serving the city here, and Wreckin' Park uses is very much part of what is, is how this campus is used, and that would not change.
So is there, you said the assumption all along has been that we will do a swap? Is there another way to think about it? Because all I've ever thought is that.
So one way to phrase the question is, could we, if we were to convey this to the school board like immediately, like ASAP, would it make sense to just do a subdivision plat with those lot lines dissolved? Because it is relevant, because this lot line right here goes right through the middle of the new high school, which is generally something you don't like to have in subdivision plots, so there'll need to be a note saying that this lot line eventually is going to go away on the site plan.
It would be, I guess there's some of it with these deeds and stuff like that that I'm not really familiar with, but I mean, from a subdivision processing perspective, it would be easier to have those lines go away this round and then have everything else as shown, because otherwise, we'll have to come back and do another consolidation plat to make those lines go away. But I don't know the mechanics of how you do that. So like, how the deed gets written up?
I don't think the lines need to go away, do they, for?
I, I don't think they would need to go away, because I think often, you know, a couple lots, there's a lot line, and the parcel's used. I mean, you need to keep the lines for parcel A and B until they're conveyed to the schools, if that's what's going to happen. But after that, they probably could go away, but I don't know that there's any need for them to go away.
I think there's building, there's building and zoning code issues with having lot lines go through buildings, so that's why sometimes we'll, we've put plat, notes on plats before saying that, you know, a building can't be demolished until this happens, so we could do the reverse.
We, we usually do that if it, there's like a lot requirement for residential lots. If, but we, we can look at this a little bit more. I mean, it's also something that could be cleaned up later easily with a plat of consolidation or something. I think that if, if someone came in to just remove those lines down the road, it would be a fairly simple re-subdivision, but we can talk about that.
Other questions, comments? So the loading on parcel D, how are they loading the garage? Are they loading it purely from parcel E, the 10 acres? Are they, does the developer loading across the school property or across the other property?
The developer is strictly loading it from parcel E. The school board, however, is loading it from parcel C.
Okay, so there's no, nobody's coming around the other side or exiting from the other side? It's basically all constrained, one half, one half?
That is correct, although I would imagine the way that things are actually going to work over weekends and things like that when the school, or summer times when the school's not operational, cars are probably going to find their own pathways and access it through the school property as well.
There may need to be some kind of crossheasements if people are going across other people's properties to ingress, egress, the garage, which is something to think about.
So if parcel E, if the EDA is what's going to be used to deal with the ground lease on parcel E, have we solved for that problem related to assessment reduction attached to a long-term ground lease after year 50? And does EDA help solve that problem for us in some way?
I don't think conveying to the EDA will help, because it's still going to be a nonprofit entity with the lease to a, a for-profit entity, so it will fall under that statute. But I think that is something that is going to have to be dealt with in the, in the comprehensive agreement, in terms of dealing with that.
I don't know if there was a mechanism that the EDA could put in place in order to compensate for that loss. I don't, I don't.
Right, well, I think we could put something into the, the ground lease. I mean, it'd be the ground lease from the EDA though, but, I mean, effectively, it's going to be from us. We're going to transfer the property to the EDA for them to enter into the ground lease, because we can't do a ground. because we can't do a ground lease under the Virginia Constitution for more than 40 years.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure whatever we do, we compensate for that policy. And then for parcel D, the way that that line is drawn, not exactly a straight square there. I assume that's because of the design of the school and the proposed garage. That's why it's not a neat little box.
Parcel.
Parcel D, the garage. Parcel D.
Yeah, that follows the footprint of the garage. And one of the comments that we're having in the back of the room is, would it make more sense if that line just came all the way to Leesburg Pike? We had some internal discussion on that as well. At the end of the day, we went with the footprint of the garage.
I just get concerned that if that footprint shifts for some reason, from an engineering perspective or otherwise, that we've kind of, no pun intended, boxed ourselves into a particular subdivision line. You like that? That was a Dave Tarter. That was a Dave Tarter fun right there.
That was a cementation.
Cementitious box. I mean, is that something that we should contemplate? Give ourselves some breathing room there? Or are we concerned about that?
Well, the thing that I would say is the counter to that is that you probably want to minimize the area taken up by the garage so that it doesn't appear, you know, there's a question about 70/30, and your garage is really big as far as land area.
Totally agree with that.
So I think it's kind of one half dozen of the other.
Okay.
And I think that's why it was done this way, to draw the smallest box. We could, although I think there's an argument that, given that part of the parking in the garage is going to be for, you know, solely dedicated to school purposes, that, you know, the garage is, that land area may be being used for school purposes. But I think, I think that's something we can consider, whether we need a little bit of, whether they need any breathing area on that or not. We should talk with them. Because it's also been in the, if that parcel needs to be together with parcel E and held by the EDA and under the ground lease, I mean, I think the school board has also been interested in trying to maintain as much of their property without giving it up as they could.
So we, have we, because I remember we had that conversation a couple times. Have we solved for that problem with the 70/30 split where the square footage associated with the spaces in the garage falls into the school split? I mean, is that what you're saying? I mean, we're, is that how it is being calculated or no?
Well, parcel E and parcel D, if they were both considered to be commercial uses, we are in compliance with the 70/30 split.
So it can only get better, so to speak? Right? Okay.
Yes, I did the math, and I think it's 9.98 acres, even if you add them two together. So that's well below the 10.38. How does the timing of all this work? So I think you mentioned that we have to do this soon. But if this garage or things need to shift a little, do we then have to go back and redo these lines?
Yeah, if it ends up, what?
Like a chicken and egg problem. Like you have to do this first in order to get to the next step, but the next step may change this.
Yeah, if this is parcel D's following the, or even parcel E, if it shifts in any way, based on their footprint, then it would, all that's going to get nailed down by the SCE approval, so we can follow along. But it could be, worst case, that subdivision plat gets delayed a little bit, because it would have to be redrawn.
We can't do them concurrently with the SCE approval in May? Like in a process perspective, this has to come first?
We're trying to keep it concurrent with the George Mason High School site plan, just because of site plan requirements. It could be a condition of approval that it gets done a little bit later, more tied with the SCE, and maybe tie it to CO for the school. That's a mechanism that we can look at doing if we need to.
I think that is, that's the critical path, is for the school site plan, which they need for their building permits and everything else.
I just have a couple more questions. Is our 70/30 split in perpetuity forever?
50 years.
50 years. Okay.
Right. Right.
Okay. So.
I'll see you there.
Correct.
So I just, I want to put, I want to put something out there, and this is, this, it's not to be, it's not to be taken as something that I'm even necessarily contemplating, but just trying to think 50 years down the road. If that 70/30 split wears off, times are changing, and at some point, not that this would ever happen, not that I'm advocating for this, but let's say sports athletics
changes, we find out that we don't need a football field, we don't need a track, we found out that we need to build another school, we found out that we need to redevelop an additional portion of that land for some reason or another. Parcel A, I'm just saying, parcel A with a memorandum of understanding that it's continued to be used for school use, does it make sense to keep that in the city's ownership so there is that flexibility in the future? I'm seeing hypothetical scenario.
I don't have to ask a robot overlord.
I mean, but you get what I'm, you get what I'm saying, though, right? I understand that that's the agreement, but I'm just trying to, I'm talking out loud here. I'm just spitballing. I'm not advocating for that or thinking that's going to happen, but I'm just hypothetically. Is that anything anybody wants to entertain? I'm going to take that as a. So parcel A is currently owned by the city, right?
No, that with the field.
Where the field is. And I'm saying, at some point in the future, the 70/30 split wears off, and we find ourselves in a situation where that field is not being used, or all of it is not being used, but it's still conveyed, or it's still owned by the schools. And we find ourselves in a situation where it's like, you know what? We need to sell that, develop it, we need to do something with it. Have we set ourselves up for a scenario where we're fighting over a piece of land about this kind of, this ownership of it, when the highest and best use for it at that particular point in time is to use it for commercial use or for something else that hasn't even been contemplated at this point? And by transferring that over to the schools at this point with, as opposed to keeping it and doing an MOU, are we setting ourselves up for a calamitous debate further down the road? I'm thinking 50 years down the road, something we can't even contemplate, but hypothetically speaking.
Well, again, this is not about ownership. This is just about subdivision.
But it is. It is about ownership, to some extent.
I agree with, I think I agree with you. I mean, I thought we were going to, I thought the council was going to hold all this land. I mean, I thought that was where we were to begin, just for that very reason, that 45 years from now, who knows what any of this is going to be used for? And that we would need, the council at the time would need to have the flexibility to make decisions.
I asked.
Well, Dave will need to have.
Flexibility. He'll be on council.
Yeah.
Well, I asked that, I asked that question when we talk about dissolving lines. That's the reason that it comes up. If we dissolve a line and go ahead and combine it, we've effectively removed that possibility.
If it's decided that the schools are going to hold some of the land, then I think it should be the most limited to the school buildings' land as possible. And certainly should exclude the stadium and parcel B and anything else, E and D.
I will say, I mean, I do have to believe that everyone's going to work in what's the city's best interest. And if we end up in a scenario where something needs to be done with that land, that smart people get together and they figure it out and it works out. But I'm just putting that out there, food for thought.
I have faith in the people in the future.
I do, too.
I think we're people in the future.
I do, too.
To get to that.
Just putting it out there.
So is the idea, Wyatt, that the, essentially, this would be, make even the what's there now versus afterwards? Is that sort of where this came from?
That's correct.
Okay. So essentially, it's like a land swap, you know, some school land for some new school land and vice versa. Has this been worked out with the superintendent and other folks to the schools?
Whenever we've discussed it, we've respected the fact that that's a council decision, and so no promises have been made. But it has been described notionally that that's a way that this could be handled.
What was the school board's plan?
To the plat? It was a very short discussion. So not much reaction to it.
So are they on board with this plan?
It's, I believe so. The, it seems to me that in our discussions, the desire of the school board has been that they retain ownership of parcel D. And that's really, seems to be the thing that we need to work through. And I'm just really worried about the complexity of having two ground leases and what that means for the financing phase of this project. And so that's what I think our next task is. We are also reaching out to the county to have a discussion with them about the overall 70/30, to have that discussion with county staff. elected officials have been briefed on the plan, but not really detailed in terms of some of the specifics. But that conversation will be happening soon as well.
Meeting with? At the staff level or?
That would be at the staff level.
And what kind of staff? Planning staff?
Through the county executive and the county attorney is who our outreach is to.
Okay.
So ownership question aside, I would say, just in light of conversations, I'd rather keep the subdivision lines the way that they are. Have that conversation later about ownership and conveyance.
You say keep them the way they are? You're talking about keeping them the way they are?
The way that they are.
On this piece of paper?
Mm-hmm.
So this is how they're, this is how they're going to be? This isn't how they are?
That's what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
Because there was some discussion about dissolving a line and combining it. So I'm saying the way that it's.
Yeah, and parcel A and B is the way they are right now.
Right.
In the way that the plat is, has been drafted.
But D and all the other stuff.
Yeah. So I'm okay with the way that this is. Yep.
Okay. All right. Is there anything else to be said on this?
Just can you just go over the timing again? When do we need to approve this? Next week? We need to approve this next week, and the school board also needs to approve it?
So, yeah, we need to have a county sign about, I think, this month, early March. So, yeah, if we could get that. Walter Phillips, this is. We'll draft it weeks later.
And you're just signing off as the applicant, and then approved through the planning commission?
I have to say, though, at the end of the day, I mean, A, we're the reviewing body of this, right? I mean, so Walter Phillips working, I think, aren't they also working for the developer as well? So they've got everything on AutoCAD for all this stuff. We ought to be able to turn all this stuff around, I would think, pretty quick if we really need to.
Yeah.
Okay. All right.
The line needs to move past the main.
It seems that that ought to be the case. All right. Anything else on this? Let's move on to, is there any scheduling comments that anyone wants to make? We do have a closed session, hopefully brief.
Are we having a mayor's meeting tomorrow morning in light of the weather?
Why don't we skip it in light of the weather? I mean, I can walk, but most people are probably going to drive. I don't think that's a good idea. Really? All day?
Yeah. We're planning to have a staff call at 5:00 AM and make the call on open-closed status.
When you're done with that, make a crank call to Ross, just for the heck of it, to get him, make sure he's up. Oh, you get up at 5:00, don't you?
Yeah. All day, every day. Yeah, I will not be here on March 4th, work session. Just put that out there. Apologies.
All right.
So does that mean that the school's program on the budget will not happen tomorrow night?
No, it's been, it's been rescheduled for next Tuesday, the 26th.
All right. We've got a closed session. Why don't we go ahead and move in? Mr. Snyder?
Just one thing real quick. I think March is Red Cross Month, and I think it would be very good if the city took on urging people to get the apps from the Red Cross, because they cover almost every element of first aid and they're free. So could you pass that on to the PIO and see if we can't do more activism there in terms of citizen preparedness?
All right. Unless there's no objection, why don't we move to our closed session?
Actually, Mayor, sorry, I have one more scheduling thing.
Yes, of course.
Since we're not doing the mayor's meeting tomorrow. Wyatt, could we figure out where to feather in the park naming process?
I don't have any more favor.
Can we figure out how to get in the park naming process on the schedule? Celeste sent me a note about how we need a public hearing and the planning commission. So I was happy to work with staff on that, but knowing that it needs to go to the planning commission, and then we do a public hearing before we actually choose the name, I just thought staff should help figure out where that fits. Thank you.
All right. Anything else? Okay, let's do our closed session. Upon a motion made by council member.
Connolly.
Seconded by council member. Is that Connolly again?
Duncan.
Duncan? All right. And passed by vote of city council, council went in a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A7 for consultation with legal counsel and briefing by staff, members, or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open session would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. Councilman Connolly?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Z is absent. Tartar, yep. All right. Is there anything else you want to talk about tonight?
Move to adjourn.
If not, yeah, if not, we adjourn. Good evening.